Okay, everybody, that's five minutes. Let's try to get this thing wrapped up. If you would, please take your seats. Please take your seats. Commissioner Johnson, are you going to be joining us? All right. Mr. Taylor, are you going to be joining us, Ms. Atwood?
Okay, sorry for the late hour getting started. As usual, we get into shortage of time. I apologize. We should have allowed more time. Call the work session of County Commission to order. You were sent an agenda there's for our meeting next Monday night. Purpose of this meeting is to discuss that agenda and how we will conduct business Monday night. Few things that we will like to change or make sure that you're aware of. Under ordinances on ordinance 243 2022-13 zoning amendment mining activities, first reading number six. I've asked for that to go to the codes and zoning committee for them to look at and give a recommendation on. It has not been there. It was sent over from planning. So we'd like for that to go to codes and zoning committee. So just please take that off your agenda at this point. Also, down under the American Rescue Plans, we will give where it says spending approval. We will go into what was sent forward from budget and finance on the park lights increase and the park grant. We'll take that up under that part of it. We should be able, hopefully, to come out of budget and finance with a recommendation from them as far as our budget so that we can do our first reading, hopefully. And let's see, where do we have that? Where's that at? I don't see it. Am I missing it? Our first reading on our... Let me see. Okay, yes, under budget ordinances, general service appropriations, general service tax levy, urban service appropriations, urban service tax levy. Hopefully, we'll get through with that to be able to have our first reading if we can. If we can't, we'll do some call meetings. I think that's the only... Mayor, did you have anything else that needed to be added to this agenda that you're aware of? Amy, did you have anything? Commissioners, did y'all have anything? Do you have anything that you think need to be added to our agenda for Monday night other than what we've already talked about?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll open up with invocation by Mr. Harsh. You good with that? And pledge led by Mr. Nolan. You good with that? Do roll call electronic check in. Approve the minutes of the previous meeting, the April 25th meeting. We'll go over a few announcements. We will ask for any amendments to the agenda and we'll approve our agenda. There again, we'll call on anyone that would like to speak to the commission to come and sign in on whatever item is on the agenda so that we can call on them at the proper time. We will have our quarter to report from Director of Schools, Dr. Satterfield. He asked last month if we put that off to this month. And we'll get into the mayor report. Mayor, is anything you need to make us aware of tonight or are you going to hold everything until next week?
I'll cover it all next week.
Thank you, sir. Committee reports right now, what we have, budget and finance, May 2nd, 3rd, 5th, 10th, 16th, and now the 23rd. Parks and Rec was April 28th and May 16th. Law enforcement is May 17th, economic development, May 17th. Veteran Services, May 19th. The Urban Service Council will meet May 23rd at 6:30 to set the urban tax levy. The three members of that need to be sure and be here, please. Are there any other committees that we've missed? Any committees? Don't see anyone, okay? We'll go into active business appointments. Do we have any at this point? Mayor?
I don't have the final name yet. I still got to get an agreement, but we will be appointing a new medical examiner this month. The current one's term ends, and so we'll be appointing a new medical examiner.
Okay, thank you. You think you will have that name next Monday?
I'm fairly confident we'll have the name next Monday.
Okay, thank you. Get into resolutions under active business, 2022-12-756. This is approving the county road list. We do this annually. This is not the county maintained roads. This is the county named roads. Am I correct in that, Amy? This is the maintained roads.
Yes, I believe that should be the maintained roads.
Okay, so we do not have a list of those. It's on the website. If you'd like to look at what those are and what the changes would be. If you need a hard copy of it, just ask Amy for it and we'll get you one. Okay. Next is resolution 2022-13-757. This is a resolution authorizing County Mayor to execute a contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation. Mayor, would you explain which one that is?
Yes, sir. This is the annual litter grant we get as part of a tobacco settlement. So it's divided out among the counties. This is what pays for the road crew to go out and pick up trash. And also, I think Ms. Bellbury at the Senior Citizen Center who participates pays in that program and that also goes to help pay some of the work crew, the workhouse.
This is the one we typically refer to as the litter grant even though it goes for other things. That's it on resolutions that I have at this point in time. Ordinances on first reading, we have several rezoning ordinances that have come forth from the planning commission. The first one is ordinance 238 2022-08. This is rezoning tax map 27B group A, parcel 15 and 16 from R2 to R3. This property is off of West Main Street and up here in the curve, just at the top of the hill. This was recommended by the planning commission at their May 9th meeting. Any questions on that one? You do have the accompanying map there and reasons and things from planning if you have any questions. Ms. Rosalie is here to answer them tonight. And if you have questions, be sure and ask. Next one is ordinance 239 2022-09. This is an ordinance to amend Article 5, Section 502 of the zoning resolution. And this is to rezone tax map 19, parcel 1404 from R2, a combination of R2I1 to R3. This property is located up on Halltown Road, toward the end of Halltown Road. The I1 portion of it is over next to the industrial park. This is to allow future further development of this property. And this one was recommended by the planning commission. Most of those tracks up through there are either R2 or R3. There are several other R3 properties along through there. If you look at your map, you see that indicated. Any questions on that one? Next is ordinance 240 2022-10. This is a rezoning request, tax map 19, parcel 1619. This is approximately 8.3 acre tract of land. Take this from a combination A1, R1, all of it into R1. This property is located in Thoroughbred, up along the right-hand side of Thoroughbred. Some of it has been indicated as A1. We thought it was all rezoned R1, but evidently there may have been an error in maps at some point in time. This is to try to correct that. A lot of this cannot be developed because it is in a floodplain area, but possibly the upper end of it could, could have some development. Any questions on that one? Okay. Next is ordinance 241 2022-11. This is to rezone a partial on McMurray Boulevard West from commercial C2 to R3. This is, this request is for residential development of this property. I think the developer came before the planning commission with a very nice proposed addition on that property. It was recommended by planning. Any questions on that one? This is right across, I guess you'd say before you get to Blankenship on the right, directly across from the subdivision is being built by Mr. Carmen and some of those.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I do address one thing on this proposed development. There are some buildings at the front that will be reserved for commercial use. So even though it's been rezoned from C2 to R3, because I know in the past the planning commission had tried to keep things along the highway commercial, there are going to be commercial space at the front of this development and residential throughout the rest of it. So I just want to address that in case that question came up.
So the front part, skirting McMurray would be left at C2. This would be the rear portion. It would be changed over to R3. That's not indicated on our map. Was that approved by planning that way and the property owner aware of that?
Yes, he submitted a development plan. And again, it's particular buildings on there that are going to be C2, or excuse me, they're going to be commercial.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further questions on that one? Okay, ordinance 242 2022-12. And this is rezoning tax map 19, group B, parcel 11, from R2 to R3. This is located on, I believe Morrison Street. Is that correct? So Morrison Street, it's 0.36 acre lot. I wanted to take it from R2 to R3 to help with the setback requirements in a higher density zone to make the lot work, basically. Any questions on that one? C9. Okay, and we have, what, one more? Say we'll move 243 2022 to electric committee to meet on it. And that gets rid of our first readings. Go into ordinance on our public hearing and second reading. Be 237 2022-07. Sure I'm correct on that? That's correct. This is taking this tract of land from A1 to R1. It's located on that Highway 25 West and Old Highway 25 strip of land as you're going up the hill, just going out of town before the two roads meet. We did approve this last, last month on first reading. Mr. Gully, you have a question? You recognize?
I believe we had had a question on this one from someone in our, in our community that had asked about notice for this property. Did we find out whether notice was given and properly displayed for this property?
I'm sorry, could you please clarify the question?
I guess simply was notice given, were signs placed at this property? It was asked of us by a member of the community that wanted to speak on this one the last time that there were not proper signs posted for this property. Do we know that signage was posted to inform the public of a rezoning?
Signs on the property I can't speak to, but I know that we do have public hearing notices in the VIDEET for the last two weeks that this was definitely going to be happening.
Can you explain to me how those?
It is, we are required to post signs on the property. I think his questions are, were the signs posted on the property?
I will have to ask Mr. Edwards if that was happening, if that happened. Let me message him.
Please check on that because they do need to be. I think there's a required amount of time that's in the ordinance as to how long they have to be up there. Thank you, Mr. Gully. I go by this property quite often. I've not seen the signs.
I've been asked that question by a few members of our community. I just wanted to make sure that came forward here to us that if it were or was not, I want to make sure that we know that. One follow-up question to that, if I might be allowed. You stated that it's been posted in the VIDEET. In the VIDEET, can you, just to help our, our community at large, you know, I read this, I read parcel number. I understand map and parcel number because I've been in this piece and doing that. Is that all that's posted is map and parcel number in the VIDEET in terms of a posting or listing?
Also, the street is posted in there as well as the map and parcel number. A lot of times, some of the property does not have a 911 address associated with that. That's why the map and parcel number is included with that information.
That would be correct. Raw property does not have an address. Buildings have addresses, so the only way we can identify it is map and parcel number. Certainly, this does need to meet those requirements of being posted with signage. Okay, anything else on this one? Ms. Baker, you recognize?
Mr. Gully, did you say that someone came to speak last month and we didn't allow them to? Is that what you said? Oh.
I would answer that. And no, we had an individual ask and say that they did not believe signage had been posted on these pieces is what they had asked if I'm not mistaken. Or it might have just been, no, I know that was the case. We had an individual speak and state that they had had an issue with signage posted on this property. And they had asked, was it posted? We weren't able to answer that. I think we asked for that to be answered. To my understanding, that was correct. It could, I could have got confused on whether it was at the meeting, but my belief it was at the meeting.
Typically, the, the signage is not posted until it's approved on the first reading. That's, that's the way the ordinance reads. Yes, sir. Now, once it's approved on the first reading, if it is approved, then it's signed, it's published in the paper. But it's, it, that's the purpose of the public hearing and the public notice is actually for the public hearing part of it. And that's why that is done that way. Pardon? What? She has what? We through with that? Okay, budget ordinances, next up. 244 2022-14, general service appropriations. And then we'll get into the general services tax levy. And then the urban services appropriations and urban service tax levy. Hopefully, we can get our first reading under our belt next Monday night. Certainly subject to what comes out of budget and finance and what we have time to put together to present for you at this point in time. Hopefully, we can do that. If we can't, we'll have a call meeting. Next, budget amendments. These were all looked at budget and finance committee. First is the ARPA funds on the courthouse HVAC that was previously approved. We do have a firm dollar figure on it. It's why we're now going with the budget amendment for that. It's just moving the light, moving the money into that line item. Any questions on that one at this point? Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to bring up the fact, I talked with Senator Farrell Hale. Can you hear me? Okay, all right. I had talked with Senator Farrell Hale and he expressed an interest in remodeling or refurbishing the courthouse in entirety with his budget amendments or his proposals next year. I don't know if that is something you'd want to consider in whether or not you want to go ahead and spend this money or if you'd like to hold off on it. But he did express a desire to completely remodel the courthouse.
Well, I think there are other things that we, we have actually, I believe, ordered these, have we not, or have we not?
We haven't ordered them because I haven't been able to execute the purchase order yet till this is approved because we just got the, the actual dollar amount with the prompt paid discount. So we just got that and that's what this was built on.
I'd like to see us move forward with this. It's been a long time coming. Certainly, if, if we can appropriate other funds, we can supplant them or, or move them around. But I don't want to hold this project up on the hope that we might be able to get more money from the state. That's my thinking, but certainly whatever the rest of the commission wants to do. But I appreciate you, I appreciate you letting us know that that is a possibility. Glad to know that. We have other things that it certainly could be used for.
You mean with the courthouse?
Ma'am?
You're speaking up to the courthouse, correct?
Yes, yes. There are other renovations that are sorely needed as well.
Like I said, he was talking about completely redoing it in its entirety. But I just wanted, I just wanted to be brought forward so that people, you could be aware of it. I mean, yeah.
Thank you. Next are just cleanup entries that we're going to have this month, next month. And trying to take care of little budget shortfalls, moving some money around. That's basically all those are cleanup entries in, in our 101 and our 111 fund. They were approved by budget and finance. Any questions on any of those? You've got them in front of you there. Any question on those? C9. American Rescue Plan Fund Spending Approval, but Parks and Rec recommended that we, and budget and finance also recommended that we take, oh, let's see how to explain this. The park lights, what had been previously approved for the lights did not include one of the ball fields. And we want to try to do all of them at the same time. So it was going to require a bit more funding for that. So that would increase that to $350,000, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly. And then the TDEC grant that was previously approved. TDEC has graciously offered to increase that up to $500,000 and possibly more. This was a matching 50/50 grant. And we had proposed and what we'd voted on before, I believe, was 296, I think. I think 298, 296. And what we're wanting to do is take up to $600,000 out of our ARPA funding and so that we can get hopefully this match for the park from TDEC. We had purposely held back some funds on ARPA, trying not to spend it all so that we could do things like this. So that if we had grant opportunities, we could use that money to match for that grant instead of using our tax dollars. It's tax dollars, but I mean our local tax dollars, I guess I should say, for that purpose. So that's what they will be. Committee recommended asking for $600,000. They have pretty much assured us that we would get $500,000 if we would match it. And since we were already more than halfway there, we felt like we should increase that a bit to be able to do all the things that are necessary and needed at Trey Park. Any questions? Mayor, did I explain that good enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Of course, we should have some notaries. This time, I don't know of any other business that we will have Monday night. Commissioners, do y'all have anything that you would like for us to add to the agenda? If you do, please let me or Amy or the mayor know so we can get it on the agenda for, for your consideration. I will let you all know that we will have a special call meeting of Budget and Finance Committee, not the commission, of Budget and Finance Committee, starting at 5:30 Monday night to look at the issue primarily of the step increases and what if any... Cleanup entries in in our 101 and our 111 fund. They were approved by budget finance. Any questions on any of those? You've got them in front of you there. Any question on those? See none? American Rescue Plan Fund spending approval, but Parks and Rec recommended that we and budget finance also recommended that we take. Well, let's see how to explain this. The park lights, what had been previously approved for the lights did not include one of the ball fields. And we want to try to do all of them at the same time, so it was going to require a bit more funding for that. So that would increase that to 350,000, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly. And then the TDEC grant that was previously approved. TDEC has graciously offered to increase that up to $500,000 and possibly more. This was a matching 50/50 grant. And we had proposed and what we had voted on before, I believe, was to 296, I think. I think 298, 296. And what we're wanting to do is take up to $600,000 out of our ARPA funding. And so that we can get hopefully this match for the park from TDEC. We had purposely held back some funds on ARPA, trying not to spend it all so that we could do things like this so that if we had grant opportunities, we could use that money to match for that grant instead of using our tax dollars. It's tax dollars, but I mean our local tax dollars, I guess I should say, for that purpose. So that's what they will be. Committee recommended asking for 600,000. They have pretty much assured us that we would get 500,000 if we would match it. And since we were already more than halfway there, we felt like we should increase that a bit to be able to do all the things that are necessary and needed at Trey Park. Any questions? Mayor, did I explain that good enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Of course, we should have some notaries. This time, I don't know of any other business that we will have Monday night. Commissioners, do y'all have anything that you would like for us to add to the agenda? If you do, please let me or Amy or the mayor know so we can get it on the agenda for for your consideration. I will let you all know that we will have a special call meeting of Budget and Finance Committee, not the commission, of Budget and Finance Committee, starting at 5:30 Monday night to look at the issue primarily of the step increases and what, if any, increase we want to go with for employees above the implementation of that. And also, we'll have some other departments. I think we may have to amend. I know the Election Commission has brought forward some figures on some minor things that they need adjusted on theirs. And certainly, if any of the other committees, any of the other departments have anything, we'll we'll take them up at that meeting. Also, we'll be able to discuss our appropriations dollars and tax levy dollars. And hopefully, right now, it looks as if we would not have any increase in our tax levy. Actually, of course, the penny, the value is going to go down because the appraisals went up. But as far as an increase in actual dollars to the public, I think we're going to be able to put this budget together and not have any additional taxes to people. The rate will go down so they can quit griping about how high the rate is because the rate's going to go down by, what, a dollar? Or a dollar and a quarter? Probably roughly?
Well, the general services are going to go from 2.4388 to roughly 1.97, somewhere around in there.
Same thing on urban will go down as well, of course. So that should make us look a little bit better in most people's eyes, I hope. Any other business? Public comments? See none? Mr. Walsh?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Appreciate your indulgence.